"When I questioned why someone would be turned off by concerned parents mobilizing to make their school districts better, she had no answer. I replied that the type of superintendent many of us hope to attract was someone who would be moved and motivated by the action and dedication of parents in their school district. Dr. Walkley? I think that day you were alluding to the real elephant in the room. That this district does not attract people because you don't pay them highly enough, you don't value them enough, and leadership has let personal interests dominate its decision-making. It is time for a change, and the change begins now. Beacon Kids deserve better. Thank you."
For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Dennis Pavlock. I've been a Beacon resident for over 50 years. And I was asked to come here tonight to bring up something very disturbing that only a few people are, however, how many people know this already? By a show of hands, can I see how many teachers, students, faculty are here from Sargent School tonight? I don't want to emphasize because they raised their hand, that's why I'm applauding for that. There have been six cases of cancer out of that school in the last seven years. Three cases within the last nine months. Wait, hold on, hold on. My neighbor was a music teacher in Sargent School. She had passed away with cancer, leukemia, at that time. So, I'm not on social media, folks, it's unfortunate, however, if it was, somebody said I would be dangerous. Okay, okay, okay. So, just so you know, I'm going to be contacting the Environmental Protection, as you see, trying to get some soil testing done. Anybody else who knows anybody else that can help out, please help out where or when you can. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Correles. I'm a parent and a taxpayer. This move tonight is nothing less than a show of contempt for our school community. I was recently surprised to learn that emails that are sent to members of the Board of Education through the school district are screened by the superintendent. So Dr. Harper Walkley decides which communications from stakeholders are put through to publicly elected Board of Education members and when, and which may not be put through. This idea of stakeholder disenfranchisement is unfortunately not new. At the Opt Out Parent Forum last spring, I was among the large group of parents, stakeholders in our children's education, who expressed concerns and alternatives to the superintendent's decision to require children in grades three through eight to individually verbally indicate refusals to their teachers on testing days. Parent letters were not being honored. Instead, the children were being placed in the inappropriate and intimidating position to refuse their teachers as young as third grade, eight years old. The welfare of students was clearly not at the center of the decision-making process. The superintendent was unmoved by our concerns and the next day went ahead with the plan to put the onus on the children to take or refuse the New York State High Stakes test. Stakeholders were ignored. Not long afterward, the district made a decision to transfer at least 27 teachers and staff in the school district. Again, the stakeholders showed up in great numbers. Teachers, parents, students, community members. They spoke out with passion and rational, thoughtful, public commentary about the disruption that this would cause in our school district. Again, the stakeholders were ignored. Another disturbing truth began to emerge as this process unfolded. Although the transfers seemed obviously arbitrary and capricious, there was no meaningful pushback from the collective body of the Beacon Teachers Association at that time. Other than two individual grievances, which were denied due to lack of union support, three, excuse me. There was only a brief statement by the then-BTA president and a reference to a meeting that had been held between the BTA and the superintendent. A statement and a meeting? After 27 sudden involuntary transfers? I am convinced that the collective bargaining unit known as the Beacon Teachers Association had no true meaningful representation at that time due to the close relationship between the BTA president and the superintendent. The teachers were sitting ducks. This scenario demonstrates a disgraceful conflict of interest. And the casualties of this conflict of interest are the students of the Beacon City School District. Furthermore, since the transfers, at least two teachers that I know of, have resigned from our district, indeed, the implications of this decision will be unfolding for a long time to come. We must advocate to ensure that stakeholders of our school district are no longer ignored. Beacon Kids deserve better.
So, I just wanted you to know that the head count in here is over 300 people right now. That's a lot of parents, citizens. We have Chair Gibson here. And we have probably over 100 people still to come because people didn't think the board meeting was starting until now. So, I want to thank everybody who's here. Melissa Rikowski was going to speak next. Is she around? She was going to hand a petition to every board member. Oh, oh, really? I don't know who saw the article in the Poughkeepsie Journal this afternoon. Did anybody see that? So, apparently, if you click on Melissa Rikowski's name there, you can see the exhibits to the petition. Which, if you are someone who is not often in the public eye, it was a little bit off-putting to see my name in print on this, but it's all good and I appreciate, we all here appreciate all the support. So, I am Melissa Rikowski, and I am the drafter. I am the drafter of the petition that was filed with the Commissioner of Education. Now, a lot of people have asked, what was that really? Well, as you can see from all the support here, we've been talking about these issues for a long time. We've been having a very difficult time gaining any traction because they are told, the board is told by council, I presume, that they'll just go away. There's nothing legal here. And if there's nothing legal here, there's nothing they can do. Well, there's a couple of things we could do. One of them was filing the petition. And the second one is replacing the Board of Education in May. Now, I know that Meredith is obviously here. She's running for the board, as she announced previously. My husband, Michael Rikowski, is running for the board. And Anthony Tsang is here, and he's running for the board as well. Now, what is going to take on the Thursday or Tuesday? Tuesday in May? May 17th. What it's going to take is for everybody here to go out and vote and get all their friends and family to vote. Right? That's what it's going to take. Regarding my petition, I fully expect that it will be dismissed on procedural grounds. Do not think that the state will come in and help us. They will not. They never do. Reading all the Commissioner of Education decisions, the state will not assist us in this. We have to do it ourselves. But the purpose of filing the petition was to get the word out. It is a legal document. It got filed with the Commissioner of Education. It was served on the district. The district answered. And the district's answer involved mainly that it was my personal vendetta. To that, I say, gosh, I'm really popular. Look at this. My personal vendetta against the district. So, that was their main response. The second was to personally disparage me. And the third was to say that the exhibits attached to the petition were fraudulently obtained. They provided no proof of that. They provided no evidence to support that. And the fact of the matter is, is that many of the email exhibits were foiled. They were obtained through the Freedom of Information Law process. So, read it. Read the petition. Read what all these great people have written. There was a press release that was written besides me and Schuttmann's. And educate yourselves. And you will see that we have a big problem here, but it's what they can fix. So, let's just keep on going. Larry Cohen's next.
Ironically, I spent hours going over this to keep it down to the three minutes because I didn't want to be timed out. I had the pleasure of three women working with me saying, quicker, quicker, quicker. You know? How often does that happen? There are no kids around here, anyway. All right, now that everybody's got a little levity around here, this is really very serious. Uh-oh, they're yelling at me to get out. I'm sorry, I won't see things like that anymore. I'm married to one. First thing I want to say, now that I don't have to limit it to three minutes, is I want to acknowledge the staff, the teachers that are here. My girls are long since graduated at the school. My wife has spent 17 years working here, working with a lot of members of the staff here, no longer works in the school. But I want to acknowledge the staff members who've come on their own time to show up here, to throw their support in with all of the parents. And I understand that it's very difficult for them to work in a hostile environment. But I want to personally thank those who have touched the lives of my family, my children, my wife, who worked with them and me in all the years that we've been involved here. It's been a gift to our family. And a lot of the parents who are now involved here have younger children. And I hope that you all will be blessed with the teachers that my children have been blessed with. It's too late again. We're very lucky to have these staff members here. We really are. God knows, they don't get paid the way a lot of other districts do. 13 in this county. Beacon's the second-most bank district in the county. So, they're here for something, and I guess it's our kids. This statement that I'm going to read was really not written for you. It was written for them, and we see where they are. So, please bear with me if there are inferences and implications that lead towards the Board of Administration that doesn't apply. "Good evening, parents, neighbors, staff, administration, and board members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Larry Cohen. Our family," I mean this about my wife's family, "has been here for four generations attending Beacon Schools. My father-in-law, who was 94, graduated from the Old Beacon High School. So, we've been around for quite a while. I was fortunate enough to serve as a member of this school board for over three terms, ending in 2014. And my service to this district also included many years as a PTA board member at South Avenue. I also co-chaired the Beacon Arts and Ed Foundation with Meredith Huer for two years at its inception. And I've also been involved in many other local organizations or community. Currently, I'm serving as a councilman in the town of Fishkill. And the reason why I tell you this is because I'm heavily involved in public service in our community, and I take it very seriously. I take it so seriously that that's why I'm here tonight. My kids are grown. They're out of the district. My wife doesn't work here, and I'm just a taxpayer. But I want to be involved in what's going on. I was here on the school board during the rotation, and I call it a rotation, of the eight superintendents. And so, as to not rehash what's been, I'll keep my feelings about this subject to myself for now. But I will say that what I believe is that it was not handled in the best possible way for our kids, and certainly not in their best interest, or in that of the staff. I'd like to address the current climate and the issues that I believe are impacting our children in a very negative way. First, I'd like to state that while I was still on the board, I was in full support agreement with Dr. Walkley on, as an interim, and then fully as a regular superintendent. It was a long and well-thought-out plan, and it was founded in much-fa-based information, all that we could figure out and find at that time. It was the best alternative, and I was in full agreement at that time. And even though Dr. Walkley had no superintendent experience, it really made a lot of sense, especially given all of the bad experience we had had. However, sometimes a person is great in one position and not in another. And due to outside influences, I'm just stating the information that's at hand. This was the case. Good that I'm taking my time here. I don't hear a thought taken. While still on the school board, I observed and was aware of some very inappropriate relationships between certain board members. That one and that one over there. That really feels so good. Union officials, her over there, and prior administrators and others that I believe were not only unethical, but may possibly border on a violation of state education law. At the least, there were a complete conflict of interest for what is best for our children. Ironically, it was me that was accused by many fellow board members that I had too much information about what was going on in the district. However, the relationships that I had were never unethical or ever a violation of any regulations. This district is now in possession of documentation that details communications between administration and a staff member that is so far beyond inappropriate. These communications state how to deal with certain board members, lay insult upon other administrators, detail an inappropriate personal relationship, which is a direct conflict of interest in the operation of the district, ad minimi, and shows empowerment to an individual that should not be empowered. As to the legalities, this is for courts to decide. As to the issues of unethical behavior, this too can be decided by others. However, in the case of morality and the court of public opinion, along with my neighbors, we here need to be the judge and the jury. Those of us who have reviewed this documentation or are called by its content and its implications, if just a small percentage of any of this documentation is valid and true, it is full justification for vote of no confidence for this administration, the involved staff members, and especially members of the school board, for its complete and total lack of oversight. The consideration of multiple resignations should be placed on the table immediately. And so that it's on the record and nobody else suffers for a loss of time when they speak, these are not questions. I do not require any answers, so please don't address them.
So, we're at 363 people now. Most people that I invited to the board meetings, I told to come around now. So, there's probably going to be another 100 or so people, I'm hoping. Is Pat Lucas here? Do you want to say anything? Thank you. This is Pat Lucas, member of the Hall of Fame Committee.
I'm actually not in the Hall of Fame Committee. My wife is, and I spoke on her behalf at one of the meetings. I simply just want to say, there is one board member sitting in this auditorium right now, Anthony White. And Bill Zoff is on this hearing. And with that being said, I also want to point out, if you watch any of the meetings, Anthony White consistently asks questions for the taxpayers of this town. He does it every single time. He gets no answers, and he gets a runaround. But I do have to say, if there's a board member that should stay on this board, it would be Anthony White.
Thank you, and thank you, Anthony White, for staying, and thank you, Bill Zoff. Lorraine, would you like to speak? Or Anthony Tsang, also running for school board this May?
The fact that you've all came here is completely and utterly awesome. All right? Just want to say, it's only in strong numbers that we will have any type of real positive solution. So, I wrote this thinking that we're going to be here, so forgive me. But, you know, my name is Anthony Tsang, a parent, taxpayer, and community leader. I've asked for engagement of the parents and the community in the past board meetings. I've asked for transparency. I've suggested a conversation on what we can do and not on what we can't do. I wrote a letter via email on August 31st that went unanswered. In my letter, I referred to bylaws and state statutes on board responsibilities and asking them to exercise them regarding the 27 teacher transfers. And I'd like to say thank you to the staff and teachers. When the district transferred 27 students, I was very concerned and wanted to know more. And I'm sure everybody else did too. And I don't think anybody got a good answer on that. I've asked questions. I've asked a lot of questions and mostly gotten answers. I've asked the board to reopen the district plan. Let us work together for a better plan. And I was told no. We are frustrated, and we are in large numbers. Well, my name is Anthony Tsang, and now I'm running for the Board of Education. I'm running because I want to make sure your voice is heard, and Beacon Kids deserve better. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jody McCreadyo. First, I would like to thank superintendent and the members of the school board for showing us how they really feel about the stakeholders and our involvement in our children's education. Over the past few months, many community members, including myself, have been coming to these meetings attempting to improve things in this district. And meeting after meeting, we're told to move forward. We would love to, but unfortunately, the current environment is a toxic one, and we are unable to move forward until significant changes are made. Problems aren't solved by sweeping them under the rug. Teachers don't feel more appreciated when they're told that the next forced transfers will be done better in the future. Parents and community members don't feel welcome and engaged when their words are twisted or ignored. My children have had amazing experiences with the teachers, the teaching assistants, and aides. And I am so grateful for the staff members of J.B. Forest who will come in contact with us later. What saddens me is the knowledge that things could be so much better for all of our children with the proper leadership. How great would it be if we utilized the amazing skills of our teachers for professional development instead of paying hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants? How great would it be if we could implement more amazing programs and educational experiences, such as overnight trips for our kids, instead of questioning the one that's been in place for years? How great would it be to send our kids to schools with more opportunities for foreign language and advanced placement classes instead of cutting the ones we have? How great would it be to send our kids to schools with more resources, such as tablets and laptops? And I'm looking at that unused $2.1 million technology grant that everybody seems to be sitting on, instead of having many start the year without the required textbooks and programs necessary to do their basic coursework? How great would it be to have a district that invests money in hiring the right people for necessary positions, such as a guidance coordinator who is able to handle scheduling, instead of having to hire consultants with high price tags that still mess it up? How great would it be to have parent-teacher conferences a couple of months before Record Card so that a strategy can be worked out to improve grades instead of just talking about them? How great would it be if ideas from community members were met with enthusiasm instead of excuses? If our teachers felt empowered rather than afraid? If involved parents were thanked rather than insulted? I love Beacon, and my children are eight and four, so we have a long way to go in this district. I want my children in a district where I know that there is equality among all of the elementary schools. Where all of the children in all of the grade levels have opportunities to work with computers on coding and programming and robotics to prepare them for the future. Where mentors are in place to catch the most at-risk students before they slip through the cracks. Where dropout prevention actually builds up electives that keep students engaged and wanting to come to school. Where the district leaders, instead of telling us why these things aren't possible here, work with us to make it possible. We have so much potential. We have wonderful teachers, incredible support staff, and amazing kids. We have an amazing community here of caring, intelligent, involved parents with a diverse range of talent and skills, and we can do this together. Beacon Kids deserve better.
I want to especially thank the staff and teachers who came out tonight. Just as with the transfers and some other situations with you, you know, the circumstances you've worked under every day, we're all confident that you're going to show up to school tomorrow and do the best by our children. But I think that what we also need to recognize here is that we have a piece of this. All of us, people who showed up tonight, it's also our turn to carry the ball forward with them, for them, and for our kids. And what I would quickly like to say is, we had two other speakers planned tonight. When we were putting together this lineup of people we wanted to talk, we wanted to make sure we reached that to every part of our district. And one of the helpful things was actually one of the foiled emails that talked about people on the Hall of Fame Committee and the former athletic director and the teachers. And there's a gentleman named Fran Fug, who had come to many board meetings to talk about diversity issues in the district. And if you watch old videos, you'll see that many times he came very respectfully. And then he, with meeting with no response and most egregiously using data he found on the website to address this issue, the only real action that was taken is they took the diversity data down the next day. So, pretty much at the end of his rope, he lost his temper in a meeting. And then there was a discussion about shutting down Public Comment and blaming him. So, we reached out to him. He gave his time a couple of weeks ago and met with us. So, we reached out to him, he gave his time a couple of weeks ago and met with us, we planned what everyone would say, and he made a statement. Unfortunately, he went to the hospital yesterday. So his statement is going to be on our website. We also have Lorraine Exell from the NAACP planning to speak tonight. And what we have discussed is, we're going to leave peacefully at eight o'clock. And so, we're going to wrap this up. And we don't want to put any staff that stayed in jeopardy, and so we are respectfully going to disband. And if anybody wanted to meet at Max's? I mean, I might be there, so something to think about. Oh yeah, and at the back of the auditorium, there will be a sign-in sheet for Advocates for Beacon Schools, which is the parents group and stakeholder group that formed. And it will have all of the statements. We planned, we planned a lot of things tonight, like what might happen, and one of our things was we thought we'd get shut down, so we had everyone submit their statements ahead of time to put them on the website. So they're on the website, and they're ready to go, you can look at what everyone said. They'll be on the website tomorrow, so. Okay, and if you have a copy, a hard copy of the petition, please find it, please hand them in at the door. We don't want them floating around, we want them handed back in. And thank you all 376 of you.